Hello and welcome to the Senate Committee on Energy, Economic Development and Tourism and Committee of Transportation, Culture and Arts 1:00 PM agenda. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the likely event we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Thursday, March 21st, 2024 in this room, 2:00 to 9:00, and a public notice will be posted. We have a two-minute time limit. Okay. First up, HB 2246, HD2 relating to State Foundation and Cultural Arts. First up, Daniel Naho Ope, testify for HTA.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs and members of the committee. The Hawaii Tourism Authority stands on its written testimony with comments about the bill and our strategy regarding contracts for services related to this issue.
Next up, Karen Ewald, Foundation on Cultural Arts with comments, and Madeline McKeegie, Policy Manager or Counsel for Native Hawaiian Advancement in Opposition. Anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing none, any questions for the committee?
Just one quick. Okay. Thanks. I was going through the list of all the grants and everything else that had come up through this process, and there's a lot of them, but a lot of them like directly overlap with the same exact grants that SFCA is giving out in different amounts to the same organizations. Is there, is there sort of a look at what they're doing versus what you guys have traditionally been doing?
Yes.
And in that process, as you select grants?
So first off, the way our selection of our programs for services are all structured towards improving visitor experiences here in Hawaii. So the projects that they do apply for have to show that nexus between the visitor industry, visitors, and the community or the artists, et cetera. The second is, we also provide wraparound services that State Foundation Cultural Arts doesn't provide. That means both technical assistance to the applicants and awardees, developing them so they understand the visitor industry and can be sustainable. We also provide the backend, which is, we actually market those programs and events, which the foundation doesn't because they just support the artists.
Yeah, I only ask because if you're like a local nonprofit or whatever, and you have to go apply to two different places to get money in presumably like, you know, to similar amounts or something, I figure it's gotta make it kind of hard for planning when you could just go to one place and get one lump sum. You either know if you're good or you're not. I'm not sure how most people do that, but it seems kind of like we could somehow improve upon that.
I can see that point. We do, in the evaluation process itself, try to ensure that our programs are not overlapping. Like, you know, if they're applying for an event or something that is very specific to our area, and they're not usually overlapping with something that's already been funded on a longer-term program with SFCA. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? So Daniel, what cultural grants would be transferred to SFCA if the bill passes? And would this transfer the impact of your staffing?
I'm gonna ask Kalani, come up here, Kalani Kalanana, who manages this area, so he could be more specific on those.
Oh, chairs, vice chairs, members. So ultimately, I think, specific to, if I understand and I read the bill correctly, it'd be the Kukulua program around Hawaiian culture programs. I think what, to get to Chair's question, one of the things that we ask is what other funding are those programs receiving as a mechanism to try to see if there is duplication? The RFPs also ask that we, they're not eligible if they receive GIA funds. And so that's another mechanism in the RFP to try to avoid duplication for programs. And so if there's tweaks to that, we can take a look at increasing our efforts to avoid duplication. I think what Daniel was getting at was the emphasis is often different. So my understanding from JJ, for example, is that the culture grants that SFCA is doing is about perpetuating the practice. Are they investing in practices like Hawaiian puppet hula that are on the brink of being lost and reviving and saving it? Where ours would say, well, if you're gonna fund that and keep that practice alive and encouraging that practice, are there mechanisms where we can create a visitor event that they can go to pay a show to go watch that hula essentially, right? And so in that way, they're related but different. And I think that that's, I think, where some of the clarity can be clarified, sorry, is the best word that in my head. And then I think on the other question, Senator DeCoit was, sorry, I lost it.
So if it was transferred with the staffing, would it transfer it as well?
Well, the short answer, so I would prefer not, if I'm being direct, because I think that that staff person who helps us oversee, that is me, and I don't want to go to SFCA. I'll just be direct. Because I'm the contract manager for the Kilauna contract, which is the administration of the six funding opportunities. So to answer your question very directly, it would be me that would be the staff person assigned to Kukulua. But I would also recognize SFCA would want additional support because the volume that they would then be managing would be increased.
Yeah. Because within the contract that we have with Kilauna, that's where all of the work on the administrative side occurs. That means tracking the payments, invoices, going to visit and ensure that the programs were carried out as stated in the contracts. That's not done by staff. That's actually done by the contract.
And then on the HTA side, as contract manager of that contract, I would be assigned to Kukulua.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Senator Kim?
Okay, so back when, in early 2000, HTA did all of the contracts. HTA managed it, they reviewed it, they got in the reports from them, and they made that decision. And they were spending a lot of time on it. And so there was a change made where a lot of the grants were then given to the counties for them to administer, to relieve HTA from a lot of this work. So now you folks have taken it all back and you folks hire somebody else to do it? Is that what you're doing?
So it transferred from the county to the Kilauna is the most recent contractor. So they were always similar to that. It was contracted to the county, and it was contracted to--
I think that was CPAP.
Yeah, CPAP, and then HCF, and then now Kilauna.
Well--
So it's been contracted since that point.
Right. Well, it went to the counties first, not necessarily contract where we paid them, but we gave them the funding and they managed it for HTA. And then HTA could have oversight. But then, again, now you pay this company, Kilauna, to manage all the contracts?
To have the oversight, but we still set the policies, the RFPs--
No, the question is, you hire them?
Yes.
And we pay them?
Yes.
You pay them? How much do you pay them?
I'd have to get a specific number back to you. Within the Kilauna contract, there's roughly 12 million allocated to the six funding opportunities with a 15% admin cap.
So we pay them 12 million dollars?
No. That's the funding that they're able to disburse, and then the admin fee is 15% of that amount.
So 15% of 12 million dollars, which is 18? What is it? I don't know. Math is included in my head. So why is it that HTA is managing it?
Hundred eighty thousand.
Hundred eighty thousand. Why is it that you guys aren't doing it yourself?
In the way we're structured right now, we do not have the staff available to do that back at that point.
1.8 million.
Yeah, 1.8 million.
1.8 million. You know how many contracts we can give out to people? 1.8 million? Hello? Do you folks calculate that, how many more we could help? I mean, it seems like everywhere in government, we have staff, but then we contract out. We contract out, we pay money because, you know, I'd rather we hire one person, 1.8 million, we hire one person to manage it. And staff, I mean, these are the things that I think that the reason HTA has gotten into such big trouble in recent years is because of these kinds of things. And I can say that because I was the tourism chair back in 2000, and a lot of the changes occurred under, during that time, where you put on, you know, you wouldn't be sitting here as a Hawaiian, Hawaiian, what is that?
Cultural expert.
Cultural expert. If we didn't put that into the law. The board wouldn't look the way it is if we didn't make changes. And trust me, it, we took a beating, I took a beating on a lot of the changes that went on. But yeah, you know, you guys need to look back and saying, what is your mission and why are we spending this kind of money when it should be going back into the community? And then what is the difference between a signature event and a enrichment?
So thanks for the question. The signature grants are separate from, in their criteria, mostly related a lot around the size of the event and their ability to attract visitors to Hawaii by attending them. They set a minimum target in the strap plan of 25% outside attendance, meaning non-resident attendance. And that's the most, that's the thing that distinguishes signature from SEP the most. The other thing is, the SEP program is really, you could think of it like an incubator, as a means by which to grow these smaller community events that hopefully one day they can grow into and become a signature event. So there's a little bit of a pipeline that we try to build between SEP to signature.
Okay, but you have the Mary Monarch in here as a SEP. Mary Monarch is huge, it's big, it's 90,000, it's more than Prince Lautu Festival or any of these others that's your signature. So I don't see the consistency here.
Thanks, Senator. With respect to Mary Monarch, one of the challenges with Mary Monarch is the ticketing system. And so for visitors to access tickets is hard because the tickets need to be requested by mail, hard copy in an envelope, oftentimes about a year in advance. And so it's difficult for visitors to access tickets to the event.
So that's, makes them not a signature event, but--
Again, because the target for signature events is 25% out-of-state attendance.
Okay, I just have a hard time understanding how you folks divide this up, and we can't, I'll just see it all in one place. Right? Yeah, but by different, so you can't even compare to see because it's so segregated. But I have some concerns about the funding and how we're using it.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Moving on to the next bill. Next bill, HB 2735, relating to Hawaii Tourism Authority. First up, Daniel, HTA, Ope.
Aloha. We do stand on our testimony that was submitted regarding this bill, and we're here to answer questions.
Thank you. Next up, Karen Ewald, Foundation on Culture and Arts with comments. Anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing none, any questions? Daniel, can you? So basically, this bill repeals the exemption of the HTA from administrative supervision of boards and commissions. Here's the only difference from HB 2246. What is your position on this bill relating to the boards and commissions?
So it repeals the exemptions that were written in our statutes in 201B. Actually, the way we are structured, we do follow most of those statements that are in the boards and commissions statutes already. The only one that currently in practice conflicts with our own statutes right now is the first one about reporting to the legislature is done through, attached agencies are done through the director as opposed directly from the CEO or the board, as our current practice is, and actually supported by the director.
So you prefer this bill or the previous HB 2246? Or neither?
Neither, actually, but, because they are very similar in essence. I can't say at this point, the board has not made a statement on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Oh, you get one more, sorry.
Thanks. Moving on to House Bill 2012 relating to electric vehicle parking. First on 2012 is the Hawaii State Energy Office. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. Nicole Chernohorsky, Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony in support and are available for any questions.
Thank you. Signed up next is Hawaiian Electric. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Aloha, Tariya Matkamber with Hawaiian Electric. We stand in our testimony and are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Retail Merchants of Hawaii.
Aloha and good afternoon. I'm Tina Yamaki with the Retail Merchants of Hawaii, and we respectfully oppose this measure. We understand that 10% of the cars are EV here in Hawaii, but most of them being like Teslas. The problem is mostly in the urban areas, not so much on the neighbor islands. And businesses should not be mandated to be the EV charging stations for the state because anytime you touch retail, prices are gonna go up. And to put in EV charging systems is very expensive. It can cost over $100,000 to install, or in some cases, it was said something to be like $25,000 per unit because you have to still understand there's permitting involved, we have to dig up all the asphalt, a lot of times transformers are needed. On the neighbor islands, people already have a lot of their charging systems at their homes. So we feel that, you know, businesses should not be the ones that are responsible for the charging of all the EV cars. Governments should offer like tax incentives or subsidies like they do in other states if they want us to do that, or encourage new businesses to be like standalone alternate energies. Right now, what we're seeing in some of the rural locations, I live in Mililani, it's people are using these EV charging stalls because they don't want their electricity to go up, so they're using the business. And what happens is, we just pass the cost on to the customers as our electric bills go up. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Na'ap. Aloha.
Good afternoon, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. Evan O, on behalf of Na'ap Hawaii. We respectfully stand in opposition to this measure, and, you know, just to highlight, you know, removal of the exemption, which would allow the flexibility to, for landowners to allocate parking stalls amongst all of their properties, would remove kind of that discretion to accommodate the market forces. And it would additionally have an add-on, a cost burden, and an impact to commercials and small businesses here in Hawaii. So, you know, we're a little concerned that those costs may be passed on eventually. And, you know, with that in mind, you know, we do respectfully oppose this measure and ask that it be deferred. So we'll be available for any questions, so chairs. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. That's everyone we have signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? If not, questions?
Yeah, for Retail Merchants. Is she still on? Hello. So Tina, in addition to the issues you raised, what about the monitoring? I know, because when you, when I go to any of the, I have an electric vehicle right away, just to disclose that. Whenever you go to any large areas like Alamoana where they have these stalls for EV charging, you can never get in. It's like somebody's always there, there are employees that use it, and then there's an enforcement issue. So is that other areas of concerns that you folks have?
That is. We're finding out that a lot of times, it's not the employees, it's the residents that live in the high-rise apartments around there that come in and use the stalls all day. We've also seen where there were fistfights where if I cannot charge my car, you can't either, or they break the system so nobody can use it, and then we have to fix it. There's nobody who really can repair these items, and they don't have replacement parts in Hawaii. So my understanding is they gotta import all of that from the mainland. So it becomes very costly for businesses to have them. We do have them because it's, you know, something for our customers supposedly, but a lot of our customers who are--
And then I noticed it says that you only can park there if you're charging, but there oftentimes people park there and then they're not charging. So again, what kind of enforcement would be required? And what can you do, actually?
You know, I know some of the, and I don't want to speak for all the shopping centers, I know they, some of them put notes on their cars, they don't ban them from parking there. I think a lot of times right now too, security is really tight because, let's face it, Hawaii is number four in organized retail theft, so the concentration has been on the theft and not so much the enforcement of the parking.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Senator Favella.
Doesn't matter, it can be him or her, I guess you, my brother. A disclosure, I don't own an electric vehicle, I get a gas guzzler. But not saying I like to ride in Chris Lee's car, so I might not sing, I might not get one. But the reason why I bring this up is because in our fairness on the neighbor islands, and I do travel to a lot of the neighbor islands, and we're always talking about everybody putting in their fair share. I understand that this is costly, but if we're all gonna be contributing to the, you know, down on a fossil fuel going forward, and I understand you said that it's gonna be cost, pass the cost down to the consumer, but the consumer already getting costs for other stuff already. So, you know, when we try to scare the consumer, I'm not saying you are, in not doing this, then we're not gonna ever reach our goals in getting a lot of the vehicles electric, and not gonna get somebody like me ever out of my gas guzzling truck. So these are the things that we need to work as an equal medium for all the retails because when I look at how the original was, that they just put planning in one shopping center, and then they own other shopping centers, but because they met the quota, they didn't do Hilo, Walmart, or whatever. On the neighbor islands, it's very scarce. In the rural areas, Whanau and other, it's very scarce, two parkings. And if you go on the west side, you never see anybody overusing the electrical vehicles. But just saying that, you know, what caught my ear is that, you know, the cost is gonna be to the consumer, which we're already getting costs, or any food costs and whatnot. So the question is, besides the cost and the security issue, what would be the reason why we wouldn't be able to comply with this bill?
So from my understanding, this bill removes the ability or the exemption that would allow property owners to just allocate it amongst all their properties. It wouldn't affect like the full amount in the aggregate in which they would be required to do. And so essentially, what the flexibility was designed to do would be to allow that these property owners to allocate their stalls to fit the market, I guess, in the surrounding areas at that point in time, based on, you know, EV demand that would, so essentially it would allow them to cater to the market where EVs are a little bit more prevalent and have landowners have the flexibility to do so and invest, you know, into their infrastructure where, you know, they were able to take on that additional cost at that point in time.
Going back to my original question is that, how are we gonna increase the need and the use of EV cars if we don't have the ability to have the EV stations going forward?
Can I answer that, Senator?
Right, and I think--
Go ahead, she'll like answer. Somebody said they plenty government tax credits, you know, cheap EVs, go ahead.
So I know on the mainland, and I think it was California, the government invested millions of dollars to put in EV charging stations. They didn't just rely on the private businesses to pay for it. And I think that's what we're asking, is, you know, everyone is complaining, how come eggs are so expensive? How come when I go grocery shopping or clothes shopping, it costs so much more now? But doing things like this, it brings it up. So we do have to work together to find a solution. So we're not bringing the cost up for the consumers or the, especially the kapunas who are on a fixed income, who may not have an electric car. And like Evan had indicated earlier, if on the west side, there is a lot of EV cars and the demand is out there for charging systems, I'm sure that the shopping centers would look into it, but a lot of times on the west side, people have homes where they can actually charge their cars at home.
Okay. Please do not blame the egg cost of this going up because egg cost is the way we raise our chickens now, that's what the cost is.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Just real quick for, I guess, Energy Office. Thanks. There's a similar bill that we had, both of these joint committees had passed out earlier in the year, which now is somewhere else in the process, but it dealt with the exact same issues. Fundamentally, what came out of that was, I think, to the point raised by Retail Merchants about government funding being put into this, there is government funding being put into this, millions of dollars, both state and federal funding, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And then secondly, there are also different lines of funding available to commercial charging installations and that sort of thing as well.
Yes, so the businesses, they, one, they can apply for federal tax credit, but then there is a state rebate program for EV charging infrastructure. And I think there's about, I don't, not 100% sure, but I think it's somewhere around half a million or over half a million that's available for businesses to apply for through Hawaii Energy. So it's state funds. The rebate program was established by the PUC, and it's administered by Hawaii Energy. So I would encourage businesses to look into that because they provide rebates, I think, from one or $2,000 up to $35,000 for EV charging. So there are state funds available for these businesses to apply for.
Thank you.
Question? So with the push for us to, to become more energy conscious and push for electric vehicles, if half the population went and got EVs, how would they be able to actually have these stalls? Because half of that half-population live in condos, so they're not gonna be able to get a charger. The other half can get it, but you're still not gonna be able to have enough to charge, publicly charge, all these cars. So what are we, what are we doing? I mean, on one hand, we're promoting this, electric vehicles for our electricity, and yet if everybody does it, we're gonna be, we're gonna be in trouble because there's not gonna, I don't care what we do to the retails and the government, you're not gonna be able to have enough chargers to handle all the people that live in condos, right? So what are we doing?
So if that happens overnight, you're absolutely correct.
Well, even if it doesn't happen overnight, and it happens over 10 years, you're still not gonna be able to do that.
So it is important to invest in public charging infrastructure, and--
Well, even with the public charging infrastructure, you're still not gonna be able to cover it. So where are we?
I'm not aware of any study that shows that we wouldn't be able to--
Well, it's common sense. If you have, if you have half the population in Hawaii living in condos, and if one-fourth of them all have an electric vehicle, you're telling me that we're gonna be able to accommodate all of them?
Not, like I said, not overnight, but eventually with gradual progress, you can install enough chargers to accommodate. And other, I would refer to other countries that have done it.
I'd like to see the study on that done.
Okay, I can definitely send you more information on this, for example, Norway and other countries have achieved.
Okay, if there's no further, I realize that we have a joint hearing next door that some more folks need to run to as well. If there's no further questions, then turn back over to Chair.
Ready for decision make. First bill, HB 2246, HD2 relating to State Foundation, Culture and Arts. Recommendation is to pass it in SD1. For paragraph, for page two, paragraph six, two members who are recognized as practitioners of native Hawaiian traditional and customary practices, adding that one would be appointed by the Speaker of the House, and one to be appointed by the President of the Senate, making technical amendments in view for clarity and consistency and defecting the date to January 1st, 2016. Any discussion? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I will, yes, Senator Fukunaga. Excuse Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favella?
No.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee on TCA, same recommendation.
I have a question. Yes. I have a question. HTA, you receive your funding from TAT, right? You don't have any TAT funding. Okay, well, reason I, reason I ask is, there seems to be, I have an issue with this bill. So, that's okay, we'll go ahead, we'll go. Okay. Do you wanna make any questions?
Yeah, I'll be voting no, Mr. Chair. I'm seeing the testimony from the State Foundation of Culture and Arts and also hearing the testimony from HTA, and for those reasons, I'm not able to support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, Vice Chair.
Okay, Chair's recommendation to pass HB twenty-two forty-six, House Draft two, with amendments, yeah? With amendments?
Yep.
With amendments. Okay, Chair Lee.
Aye.
Okay, Vice Chair goes no. Senator Alafanti?
No.
Okay, Senator Kanuha is excused. Senator Awa?
No.
Okay. Measure does not, yeah, is not adopted.
Thank you. Next bill on agenda, HB two seven three five, HD one relating to Hawaii Tourism Authority. Recommendation is to pass as an SD one defecting the date to January first, twenty sixteen. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Seeing none.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Can we put something in the committee report to raise concerns about the fact that HTA contracts out and that this funding is going to contractors instead of going to the intended use?
Yes.
Thank you.
What she said. Got him on the recording. Okay, I know you guys gotta go. So yeah, we add that to the committee report.
Thank you, if it passes.
If it passes. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Excuse Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Reservations.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
TCA Committee, same recommendation. Any discussion?
With amendments.
With amendments. Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass HB twenty-seven thirty-five, House Draft one, with amendments. Chair Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair goes no. Senator Alafanti?
Aye, with reservations.
Okay, Senator Kanuha is excused. Senator Awa?
No.
Okay. Measure is not adopted.
Okay, moving on to the last measure, HB two thousand twelve, HD two relating to electric vehicle parking. Wanted to make a recommendation based on all the discussion, pass this with amendments, but inserting the contents of Senate Bill three seventy, SD one, which both these committees had passed out earlier this session. So reverting to the Senate position, which also includes a working group with the Energy Office to look at how to increase EV access on the neighbor islands. And we'll note in the committee report as well, asking the Energy Office to actually connect the local businesses that we've been talking about with the different streams of funding available, both federal and state, for EV infrastructure. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, so we're not removing the exemption.
It still has, so the bill we passed out before, three seventy, SD one, had the existing language in this bill plus working group plus permitting process.
So it, SB three seventy, it removes the exemption?
It still does, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna be voting no.
Okay, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass HB twenty twelve, House Draft two, with amendments. Chair Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafanti?
Aye.
Senator Kanuha?
Aye.
Okay, Senator Awa?
No.
Okay, measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Committee on EET, same request. This Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Excuse Senator Kim.
No.
Senator Favella?
No.
Chair, your recommendation is not adopted.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. Lord, welcome to Senate Committee on Energy Economic Development, Tourism, one fifteen PM agenda. We've been streamed live. In the event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, committee, we're convening to discuss any outstanding business at one PM on Thursday, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. In this room, two to nine, public notice will be posted on the legislature website. You have two minutes to testify. Okay, first up, HB two three six nine, HD one relating to Hawaii Community Based Economic Development Technical and Financial Assistance Program. First up, Dennis Ling testifying on behalf of DBED. Hello.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and a member of the committee, Mark Ritchie for DBED. And we'll stand on our written testimony in support. And if you have any questions, Chair.
Thank you. Next up, Regina Gregory in opposition. Anyone else? No? Any questions? Nope. Okay, moving on. Next up, HB two three seven zero, HD one relating to Stadium Authority. First up, DBED, James Tokioka. No, James Tokioka. No minor amendments made? No. Next up, Ryan Andrews, DBED, Stadium Authority.
Please don't kill her. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Senator Kim. Ryan Andrews from Stadium Authority, and we stand in support of this bill and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Decision making. So first up, first bill, HB two three six nine, HD one, recommendation is to pass as an SD one defecting the date to January first, twenty sixteen. Any discussion? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Excuse Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favella is excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, HB two three seven zero, HD one relating to Stadium Authority. Recommendation is passed as an SD one in subsection B on page seven, adding the word voting before members to clarify that voting members of the board will be electing the board chair. On page seven, change currently appointed to currently serving members regarding the quorum requirements. Then making technical amendments needing for clarity and consistency and defecting the date to January first, twenty sixteen. Any discussion? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Excuse Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.